We'll call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order this April 19th, 2023. If staff could call roll, please.
Ryan Pearson.
Here.
Paul Wagaman.
Present.
Philip Combs.
Present.
Lynn Larson.
Present.
Brian Parsons is absent at this time. Robert Estrada.
Here.
Don Daniels.
Here.
You have quorum chair.
Great, thank you so much. Before us, we have the minutes of April 5th, 2023, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Mr. Pearson made a motion first and Mr. Larson second. Any discussion, changes? See and none at this time, all those in favor by see and aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, minutes passed as written. Any changes to our agenda tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chair, requesting that the presentation by Becky Newton, our Economic Development Manager, be moved up to right after the public hearing is closed.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to open up public comment. So anyone wishing to speak under public comment on any subject wishing to do so. I see individuals have signed up for the public hearing. This is a additional opportunities for anyone wishing to speak on other items they wish. We'll open up the public comment period. So at this time, anyone that wishes to speak can step up to the microphone and state your name. And the city reside. Just again, if you are want to speak under the public hearing regarding the amendments to 2023 Comp Plan Amendments, that's going to be next on our agenda. No, no problem, just wanted to make sure. You're good? Okay, anyone online on Zoom that wishing to speak under the public comment?
There's two attendees, Mr. Chair, remote. And if either one of them would wish to speak during the public comment, please raise your hand.
And I don't see anyone at this time. So again, anyone wishing to speak under public comment? Seeing no hands raised, we will close the public comment period at this time. Now, we'll now move to the public hearing. And this date has been set forth for the continuation of the proposed 2023 Comp Plan Amendments. So this is a continuation as well. So I do have some individuals that have signed up under the 2023 Comp Plan Amendments. And I'll start off with the first one, John Grant.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Would you mind if I did some preliminary comments first?
So one minute, go right ahead, thank you so much.
Thank you. And this will be quick, so.
Yep, no problem.
So we are in the middle of the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Amendment cycle. And on March 15th, you held an initial study session. And then on April 5th, the public hearing was opened. And then the commission continued the hearing through this meeting this evening to allow for additional public comment. Based on public testimony to date and some internal reviews that has been happening at the city, there are changes tonight compared to the April 5th version of 2023-03, which is regarding the Lakewood Racket Club. And then also 2023-05, which is regarding the umbrella term special needs housing and then foster care facilities. So I'm going to go over those really quickly before the public hearing. And then the other thing that I'll just give you a heads up about, Commission, is that based on additional changes that have come up within the last 24 hours, we are going to, as a staff, suggest that the commission take a listen tonight, absorb what's said in public comment, discuss the package on May 3rd, but not actually try to take action until May 17th. Just to allow for plenty of time for you to review, discuss, ask questions, suggest any edits of your own to any of the amendments. Just kind of giving everybody a little more room to think and breathe. So just very quickly, there's a total of nine amendments. And 1, 2, 4, 6, 7, 8, and 9 are exactly the same as they were on April 5th. And the department continues to recommend approval of all of these. 2023-03, as I just mentioned, is the request that came in originally from the Lakewood Racket Club to convert or rezone their property, which is down here, from two different zones into Open Space Recreation 2. And then on March 30th of this year, they updated that to say, no, we wouldn't like it to be Neighborhood Commercial 1 instead. Because what that would do is allow their use as a health fitness facility to be permitted outright versus being a non-conforming use. We have now, as a staff, done additional review of various options under the city's code. And actually, we are recommending NC-2 rather than NC-1 because, according to code language, NC-1 is more of a localized, serving a surrounding neighborhood type of use. Whereas NC-2 is considered one that's, I won't call it regional, but more than just that neighborhood. So you've got people from around the city or maybe outside of it coming and using it, which makes more sense for the racket club. And both of the zones, NC-1 and NC-2, do allow that use outright. Really, the only difference between the two in terms of how the site would be developed are what you see here in these first three rows. There is a 10% higher maximum building coverage and impervious surface allowed in NC-2. And the height of the building can actually be 10 feet higher. So it is considered a more intense version. I don't know, I don't think the building height for the racket club would get that high ever. But in any event, these are the rules that they would be comparing between NC-1 and 2, or you would compare. And once again, the city is recommending NC-2 rather than what they requested on March 30th. 2023-05 is the one that's had the most attention by the public, attention by the Department of Commerce, actually, as part of the review that they do with all development regulation and comprehensive plan reviews. And there was a version provided to you April 5th. There was a version provided to you for this evening's meeting. There was a version provided to stakeholders several days ago. And we now have a version that you will be seeing for May 3rd. So this is a moving target, obviously. It's very fluid for a number of reasons. And so it has complicated this public hearing process, which is why I'll go back to my first statement saying allowing the commission more time to hear, to consider, to deliberate is probably a good idea. But in any event, you may be hearing comments tonight based on tonight's packet version or what the stakeholders received within the last 48 hours or so. So here at this point is what we're suggesting as next steps for the commission. We'll discuss tonight. And then on May 3rd, you would have additional conversation about any and all of the amendments that you may want more detail about or decide if you want to propose any changes yourselves. And then May 17th, there would be the decision, if you're ready to, to take action on your resolution to the council. And then May 22nd, we would move it over to the council and they would start their process. If for any reason, please don't feel pressured by seeing these dates. If there's any reason why you want to take longer than this, you're perfectly able to do that and we can change the dates at the council. So with that, I will stop sharing and turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair, for the hearing.
Great, thank you so much. So now the continuation of the public hearing on the 2023 Comp Plan Amendments. Now, Mr. John Grant, welcome, state your name and the city reside.
Good evening, Commissioner members. My name is John Grant. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer for the Low Income Housing Institute, or LEHI. I reside in Seattle. We are the operator of the former Candlewood Suites, now known as Maureen Howard Place, offering 80 units of emergency shelter for homeless people. LEHI also operates over 70 properties in six different counties across the Puget Sound, many right here in Pierce County. First, I want to thank Tiffany Spears and the Planning Department staff for taking time to meet with stakeholders and making significant improvements to the draft amendment to the Comp Plan. In particular, the removal of the conditional use permit process and other changes are very welcome, such as the right to appeals, appeal concerns to the hearing examiner. So thank you for that. However, the most recent draft that we received did introduce some new concerns, left some others remaining. And we would greatly appreciate if there could be further changes that can be made. In particular, the ordinance includes a set of general restrictions, including a need for a community meeting, building and fire inspections, and an operation plan. In addition to this, the draft amendment adds six additional pages of requirements only for facilities that serve homeless people. These additional requirements do not apply to other special needs housing that serve other populations, such as a nursing home. This can be a fear housing concern when homeless people who often have disproportionate representation of various protected classes, such as race and disability status. For this reason, we request the city eliminate the operations and development facilities section as it relates to this concern. We also request that language be modified to allow for emancipated minors to be allowed to receive services at a facility. The current language doesn't take this scenario into account and is a scenario that happens for homeless youth. We also request that the prohibition for serving clients that are under court supervision be removed. This is highly problematic on many fronts and serves no meaningful public policy objective other than to create artificial barriers for a population that has severe challenges to secure housing. This will only reproduce a cycle of recidivism when we should be doing everything we can to make sure people have shelter or housing available to support themselves as they reintegrate into society. It is also troubling, given the disproportionate impact this would have on people of color that are targeted by our criminal justice system. We are not opposed to the standards for crime prevention through environmental design, also known as SEPTED. However, we request that existing buildings be exempted as the cost to bring them up to SEPTED standards could be prohibitive for most nonprofits. This ordinance should exempt existing structures from all structure-related SEPTED requirements unless these structural elements are being renovated as part of the conversion of the property. We have other concerns that we have detailed in our letter that we submitted to the commission earlier today. We will continue to engage with the city, with city staff to find solutions. And we greatly appreciate your time and consideration today. We hope to be an invaluable service to those who are in most need in the Lakewood community. And I'll also just say that I also highly encourage you to extend the deadline to provide more feedback and input on this process. And again, thanks to the city staff for their great work on this. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Grant, appreciate it. Barbara Wyatt, welcome. State your name and the city you reside in.
My name is Barbara Wyatt. I live in the city of Lakewood and have lived there for over 20 years. I should also tell you, I'm a member of the Lakewood Racket Club and have been a member there for 15 years. I should also disclose that I'm married to one of the commissioners standing, sitting before me. That is Lynn Larson.
That would be immediate.
On this, I want to tell you, I totally support the Lakewood Racket Club's request to put in four to six new indoor courts on the property. I think it's a great idea, we're looking forward to it. Ken Enslo is behind it. He's done an excellent job of getting numbers, understanding the process. It's a large project, there's no question. In that, my concern is currently Lakewood has the two zoning. And you're going to have to, I have to keep looking at my notes because you throw these acronyms out faster than I can. They have a mixed residential and they have the open space recreational. And the current building is located on the Open Space Recreational, OSR-2. And my question is, why would they, why would we, why would the Planning Commission want to change it to a Neighborhood Commercial 2? The concern I have is I believe the entire property should be the Open Space Recreational 2. There's already building on one, it should do it on one. My concern is when I looked at the planning map online, which is really excellent, when I look for the business, neighborhood business, Bridgeport Way is considered, she had just said, the mixed, neighborhood commercial. I feel uncomfortable as a resident of the city of Lakewood to have another Bridgeport as potential on the Lakewood property. So that's my concern. I would recommend the Planning Commission just go from their current mixed residential to go to the OS-2.
Great.
Business.
Great, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Seeing no one else in the audience, but we do have some people on Zoom. Anyone wishing to comment under public hearing, just please raise your hand. We got Amanda DeSharo's. And then DeShazo, you want to speak? Amanda, yes, go right ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Perfect. Sorry, one second. Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Amanda DeShazo, the Executive Director of the Tacoma Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium. And I reside in Tacoma. I'm speaking today on behalf of my agency in regard to the proposed 2023 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. And first, I'd like to thank city staff for taking the time to walk through the proposed changes to the Comprehensive Plan Amendments. The consortium is happy with the majority of the changes that were made. And it shows that staff was really listening to our concerns, especially with the removal of the conditional use permit and including the opportunity to appeal any decisions. The public process was helpful and transparent, so we really appreciated that opportunity. And even with the favorable changes, there's still some areas that we would like to recommend edits to. First, we would like the restriction on serving clients who are under court supervision removed. Individuals who have been or are currently involved with the court system are screened out by traditional landlords. We need landlords who will give them a fair chance and the opportunity to access services to help them get back on their feet. And more often than not, those landlords are affordable housing providers. So we shouldn't take the opportunity away from them. We also want the occupancy cap on emergency housing and emergency shelters removed. Lakewood currently has the opportunity to serve its residents in need at Maureen Howard Place, but it would be limiting the number of residents due to these caps, which ultimately leaves individuals on the street when they could receive assistance. Also, the requirement of the 1,000-foot spacing between buildings should be removed. There are opportunities for affordable housing developers to acquire buildings utilizing state funding. It's a new resource, we're really excited about it. And we wouldn't want to limit our opportunities to secure much-needed housing due to a barrier that the city creates. Lastly, we ask that the operations and development conditions be removed entirely. Any operating agreement should be established by a contract with funders, not legislated. And I'll continue to stress that the city should work with the consortium and its members to better understand what requirements are already impressed upon affordable housing developers and how we can provide that information to the city in partnership as opposed to in response to mandated requirements that will add additional barriers and hoops to jump through. We appreciate your time and consideration of our recommendations. Definitely here to support in any way we can be, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak before the commissioners? 206, 8186679, you wishing to speak, raise your hand. Let's see. No one else, right, is on Zoom?
No, Mr. Chair, that was it.
Okay. So at this time, there's no other, go ahead, yes?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm jumping ahead of you, I think. But just to echo one comment made by Mr. Grant this evening, we did also receive written comments, which were emailed to you today from Allison Reynolds of Stoll Reeves LLP on behalf of Low Income Housing Institute. What, one thing regarding the public hearing is we would support, from the staff perspective, if the commission wanted to do so, keeping the public hearing open through May 3rd on 2023-05. That's the only one that's really generating continued interest and concerns. If you wanted to close the rest of it, or you're welcome to keep it open for all of the amendments.
Yes, Mr. Estrada.
Regarding the changes that we get you made, throughout the process, we all indicated that the conditional use was a goal, was a must, per se. But then just recently, you changed. What factors were considered?
Sure. When the city of Lakewood first started putting together this proposed amendment, we took a look at jurisdictions that out there that had already placed things on their books regarding regulation, some of which was a number of years old. When we put the draft out for the Department of Commerce to view, as well as the members of the public, we received similar comments from the agency as well as from those providers that you've heard from in recent weeks, talking about how, long story short, what we were bringing as examples from elsewhere were out of date and actually didn't comply with really recent changes to state law. So what we were doing now with the changes that you're seeing tonight, and then in addition to the ones you'll see for the next meeting, is continuing to bring things up to the minute according to state law changes and according to agency guidance.
Yes, Mr. Estrada.
And so some of the proposed changes made by entities fall in the same category. That's a, that is to say, conditional use, what they bring up was part of the conditional use. And now you're saying that maybe some of them are also going to be deleted?
What has happened so far is when you first saw this, it had a number of things being labeled as a conditional use approval, which is a different process through permit review and would require actually approval through the hearing examiner. As opposed to what's in front of you now, which is, this is a quote permitted use, meaning it is going to be done administratively by the city staff. There are conditions proposed on that approval, meaning it's not, I want to do this and I can do it, period. It's, I want to do this and I understand these are the conditions I must meet. That's the way the code is written now. And so the big change that you heard some support for tonight is removing the requirement for hearing examiner to consider the application, is to say, city staff will have the authority to review the applications, meaning less cost, less time for everybody involved primarily. But then there's continuing to, you're all here tonight, I think, or you did here. There's still some concerns about what conditions are in the code right now.
Good, thank you. Oh, Mr. Combs?
All right, I just want to clarify, are you talking about the racket, racket ball? Are you talking about the other use? Okay, so I have two questions, but I didn't know if we closed comment already. So I wasn't sure if I should make the mic comments yet. We good? All right, so this, before I comment, just clarification from staff on the racket ball. I understand the concerns we heard earlier and I had the same thought. That would be an outright approved use there, but it would also be wide open for anything else. And I'm curious to know if there's any other options besides a non-conforming use and upzoning to a significantly different use than we would intend for an area that's off of an arterial, you know, residential street.
I'll give an initial answer and Mr. Brewer will flush it out. So the reason we're recommending NC-2 tonight is because the racket ball, it's, club itself requested NC-1, Neighborhood Commercial 1, because that is one of the two zones that allow these types of facilities outright. So again, it's not going to be non-conforming, which actually it is right now. And it wouldn't be requiring a conditional use permit, like we were just talking about. The reasoning behind NC-2 versus NC-1 is because that type of facility is more appropriate within the NC-2 category. Having said all that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Brewer in terms of what could be done as an alternative to just saying that's the new zone.
Yes, Mr. Brewer.
Okay. The point being made this evening that if you go to NC-2, it's going to allow for a lot of other activities. And it doesn't necessarily mean that the racket ball court will always be a racket ball court. So that is accurate. Now, if you're talking about allowing something different, going to a different commercial zone, we would have to go back and take a look at the code to see where this would fit. To see if there's a less intense commercial zone than NC-2. And then we're going to be limited because we're going to end up in just one or two zoning districts that are less intense, but may not meet the long-term needs of the racket ball court. Now, keep in mind, NC-2 allows for mixed-use development. You could do pedestal-style development. At some point, the racket club could run into some financial issues. And then all of a sudden, it's doing townhouse development. So you could have both. So you know, that's the implication with the NC-2 zone. And keep in mind that this open space zoning has been in place at the request of the racket ball court previously. And so now they're proposing to do something different. I understand that. The other option is to develop an agreement, which the city does not wish to pursue for a piece of property that is small. It's too much of an administrative problem for both the owner as well as the city council. So your options are pretty limited. The other one, of course, would be to go back and change the underlying commercial zone, NC-1, to allow for a few more, a few other activities that are more allowable, that fit the needs of the racket ball club. But that's not the request.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the, it's been a little while since we've looked at specifically that. And so it'd be helpful that, I think, obviously, I'm for having a little more time so we can digest this and do it, that give all of these things the attention they deserve. It seems to me that all of a sudden, having an island of NC-2, that it's a pretty significant chunk of land, too. It, you know, I'm curious to know how, it's, to me, it seems like the existing use is an acceptable use because we've had it there and it's working. But if we, NC-2 zone it, it immediately has a property, I mean, they could, like you said, close a door and turn around and sell it and develop it into a, something that may not be as neighborhood-friendly, but still serve that function. And I'm not opposed to development. You guys know, I love to see good new stuff go in. But I also think doing it in the right way in the right place. So I just, I would love to get some more information. Looks like you have some more comments, so go ahead.
If I could, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This map that you're seeing on your screens here, the bottom right is where the racket ball parcels are. And they are, in fact, split zoned, meaning some of it is in open space recreation and some is in MR, mixed residential right now. And so, A, that's not ideal for, regardless of what the use is, to have one parcel have multiple zones on it. But again, as it sits right now, as a non-conforming use, the idea of trying to add six new courts, the process would be very difficult, costly, time-consuming, to say the least, if they can ever get there at all. So the idea behind the request to not to go to OSR-2, but to go to NC-1 that they submitted a few weeks ago is, okay, let's go to the zone that allows it outright, which removes all of the non-conforming issues. It removes the split zoning issues. And it's something where, as was said tonight by comments and by Mr. Brewer, that does have a number of other uses allowed. But only NC-1 and 2 are the only commercial zones in the city that currently permit these outright. So it's either changing allowed uses in a zone or it's allowing this saying, yes, we recognize that there are other uses that could come on this property at some point. So that's just something for the commission to chew on.
Yes, Mr. Brewer.
I'd also point out that a portion of this property is in the flood plain as well.
Mr. Larson?
So is there a way to protect the neighborhood against the other uses that are in NC-2 that would be not good? 7-Eleven, for instance, that would be things that would invite the public into a single-family neighborhood, the single-family on three sides of that property that... Uh, that, uh, that we're making a mistake and doing the wrong thing to find that we can allow.
There, there is an option here, uh, before the commission to postpone action on this amendment. Meaning if you were saying, we're not ready to make this change at all, for whatever reason, you can postpone it to a future cycle and give the city, give the commission, give the public time to think about another way to handle this rather than trying to shoehorn it into the next couple of weeks.
Mr. Brewer?
Well, keep in mind you have HB eleven ten. Uh, that's going to be changing residential zoning throughout the city of Lakewood, and that may have some relevance with this particular request. Not sure exactly what that means yet, but, but that's also out there. That's something that you, you're going to need to pay attention to, and you're going to be getting updates on that fairly soon.
Yes, Mr. Strata.
So with that in mind, sort of that, it's also going to affect oh five, isn't it?
Eleven ten, as it has pretty much made it through the, the legislature, it's basically waiting for one last vote. It's made it through both sides and et cetera. That is more on the market side of housing. What we're talking about with oh five is the special needs subsidized emergency housing. So crudely speaking, no, there are two different step, um, um, bills, two separate actions and allowed uses. It will mean likely that you're going to have properties now that would allow all of those things potentially. So within residential zones, you could in the future, and you may see emergency housing, you may see permanent supportive housing. You may see just more dense market rate housing because of all of these things that are happening with state, with state law.
I will say it this way, local zoning has changed and it's more centralized in the future and, and you're going to be talking a lot about that soon.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Any more questions? About the, uh, recommendation is the staff, uh, recommend to, uh, leave the public hearing open until the close of next, um, that would be May third.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Leave on all, on all of them. Today, we just, on all of them?
I, I'd actually be okay closing all except for these two, or is that where we're at right now?
Well, yeah.
It's up to the commission.
We can, we, you can make that recommendation if we want to.
I would make that recommendation just so we at least can focus on not worry about having an extra distraction later and just focus on those two items.
Second. Um, so you, uh, maybe one pretty much in favor of the two, the only two that we had, uh, most of the comments by are the oh three and the oh five are those two. Everyone feel comfortable of, of closing the public hearing? Um, of the two thousand twenty-three comp plan amendments on all of them except oh three and oh five. Okay? So all those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing? So the public hearing for the two thousand twenty-three comp plan amendments is hereby closed on all with the exception of oh three and oh five, and those will be continued till the close of May third planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes. Well done.
Chair, can I ask?
Yes.
Yes. And staff, it, it'd be helpful to, uh, understand, because there's been a lot of, I saw what came through earlier. I didn't have a chance to even read it all, so I was hopeful that we would extend anyways. Um, with the changes that there have been, where does staff sit on recommendations right now on the emergency shelter issue? And is that open for discussion tonight, or is that something we need to?
I have a completely separate presentation for you once we get through the presentation on the MFT program. So we'll be talking in much more tonight about it.
Great. Thank you, fellow commissioners. Thank you for your input. Thank you as well for all your comments and and hopefully we can work through all this. So, um, okay, we move to next, um, under new business. We have Ms. Becky Newton here with a presentation of updates to the Lakewood multi-family tax exemption program. She's with the economic development manager, Ms. Becky Newton.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, commissioners. Good to see you all this evening. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, in your packet, beginning on page seventy-seven is where the information begins with regard to the multifamily tax exemption program incentive that the city currently offers. And this evening, um, we're, we're coming to you, uh, just to provide you with a initial overview of the program and some thoughts and, uh, pardon me, potential recommendations uh, for the program going forward. The legislature did, uh, make some updates to the program in two thousand twenty-one, uh, which Mr. Brewer had presented on, uh, to the city council, um, in that year. So, um, beginning on seventy-seven, as you all know, the current program is limited to either an eight-year program, which is full market rate, or a twelve-year program, which must include at least twenty percent of affordable or restricted rent. And the basic eligibility criteria are must be located in a regis, you know, a residential target area. It must include a minimum of four units. It also, at least fifty percent of the space must be designated uh, for multifamily housing and must be provided for permanent residential housing. Construction, once we, um, provide an agreement with the developer, construction must be completed within a three-year period. Also, um, low-income households occupying any rental units uh, must be provided, uh, location relocation support. And, um, we also don't want to just purely demolish any buildings, so there must be some reason to remove, um, old buildings and replace that with, with new buildings. So the eligible areas, um, city council may by ordinance or at any time amend or rescind the, the areas. And, uh, resolution was last, um, completed in two thousand fifteen, resolution, resolution two thousand fifteen ten. And then on the following pages, you'll see the areas which are, include the first page, the map is the tax incentive urban youth center. So when the program is set up, it's two stages. Um, the first stage is the council must determine that there is an urban area which is in need of additional, additional potential residential, um, properties. And then they can identify specific, uh, residential target areas where those projects may be built. And then on page eighty of your packet, there is a, a table, um, showing basically what the differences are in the different programs, uh, which was adopted in, uh, two thousand twenty-one, uh, two thousand twenty-three, there was MFT updates, and there is also a state work plan, uh, available online. And, um, they're in the process of working out an auditing court program as well to audit these. So as I mentioned, the eight-year program is, uh, market rate. Uh, there, we are eligible as a city. Also, um, there is no minimum affordability uh, and no transit requirements for the eight-year. Um, an eight-year project may now, uh, request an extension of twelve years. If they, within eighteen months of concluding their eight-year period, they can apply if they include a twenty percent affordable units, so they can get an additional twelve years added on. Um, the sunset for any of these is, as of this time, is December thirty-first, twenty thirty-one. And then our twelve-year program, um, I think we're pretty familiar with that, must include the twenty percent. And, um, and then the twenty-year pro, there are two twenty-year programs that were added, um, a home ownership program, which requires the city to partner with a nonprofit organization to run the program. And the rental housing, uh, twenty-year is actually not available at this time to the city. And that's because, um, at the time, in two thousand twenty-one, we would have needed to complete an ordinance, um, for include, inclusionary zoning, which the city decided not to proceed with. So we can ignore at this point in time, the rental housing for twenty years. However, um, the twenty-year homeownership program may be available, uh, to the city of Lakewood. And then moving on to page eighty-one, um, the legislature did have, um, a number of things in mind when they were looking at the program and what changes that they wanted to make. Um, primarily, as stated here, they wanted to incentivize the multifamily housing, increase densities as well as increase production of the market rate workforce housing, develop permanent affordable housing opportunities and promote economic investment and recovery. Also to attempt to create family wage jobs. And changes require that Lakewood, um, does amend their current program. So that's why we're, we're looking at this going forward. So, um, just going through some of the updates and, uh, looking at how they impact Lakewood. Uh, so it amends the definitions for low-income households and moderate income households by deleting the term high-cost area and adding the term metropolitan statistical area. So what this basically means is that we can decide to use, um, the MSA. And in our case, it refers to the Tacoma, Washington metro fair market rent area. So, um, and comparing that to Lakewood as a note, in two thousand nineteen, the median household income in Tacoma was eighty-four thousand three hundred seventy-three, whereas Lakewood was sixty thousand five thirty-four. And that's a, it's an important consideration because on one hand, if you offered it at a higher rate, you may be, um, opening up to more, um, um, opportunity for building. However, you need to also think about, is it truly affordable, uh, for our community? And then, uh, number two, uh, creates the twenty-year multifamily property tax exemption. And for this option, at least twenty-five percent of the units must be built by or sold to a qualified nonprofit organization or government agency that will assure permanent affordable housing going forward. Impact to Lakewood, it just depends, uh, as of today, we haven't had any proposals for projects like this, but there could be um, going forward. As mentioned, it does require us to partner with a nonprofit or local agency partner to manage the, the project. Um, option two, as I mentioned, the rental is noted in here. However, at this time, city of Lakewood, um, is not um, eligible to, to use that. However, they are talking about maybe, maybe, um, changing that going forward in the legislation, but at this time it's not available to Lakewood. Okay, so, um, and then moving on to page eighty-two in your packet. Uh, the new legislation also provides the option for the twelve-year extension to the existing eight-year and twelve-year exemptions that are within the eighteen months of expiring, as I mentioned earlier. Short-term, no impact to Lakewood, um, existing proj, projects. Um, it could, um, potentially, um, add to the city's administrative costs. So that is one consideration as you're thinking about how we, um, are making your recommendations on how we might change these programs. Um, it will impact staff, obviously. Uh, let's see. Also, um, so requires property owners to provide qualifying tenants with relocation assistance. That is one thing that we do want to, um, consider is that the, um, developer owner must provide, um, relocation assistance. So if, for example, they have a, uh, an affordable project and they're getting near the end of their exemption and then they, then they decide to make it a market rate project, they do have to provide for relocation, um, expenses for those lower income, um, units, um, for folks.
Just for a point of information for the planning commission, rental housing safety program does relocation assistance all the time. So relocation is not something new to the city of Lakewood. We do it on a regular basis when we have issues with rental housing, uh, apartments and the like. Um, and if we do get to a situation where developer have a rental and then they're going to build this, then yes, rental re, rental relocation is going to be required. And I think that administratively, we've gotten pretty good at it. So that's not an issue for, for me. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. And then C on page eighty-two, authorizes local jurisdictions to assign and collect an administrative fee, so we can change those. Obviously, um, to cover a program oversight costs and so forth to the new owner occupied twenty-year exemption. Impact to Lake, Lakewood, um, so it only impact Lakewood if the twenty-year exemption is developed, obviously. Uh, D prohibits the approval of new exemptions beginning January first, twenty thirty-two and granting extensions beginning, um, in twenty forty-six. So it's none, there's no impact to Lakewood because this is intended to sunset. Um, there is a sunset clause in the statute. Uh, okay. And then E changes to date, um, changes the date cities reporting. That's not a big deal. We've already done that. And then F, um, auditing requirements. So there will be more auditing requirements. And what I was told recently is that most of that will probably be done from the state level. Uh, but however, the city will need to, um, be more mindful and develop a more comprehensive auditing, um, program and a manual, um, so it's easier for developers to understand and also know what the requirements will be going forward, as well as the staff responsibilities to track these projects. And then on page eighty-three, um, getting into some of the current program and recommendations. So location, no change at this time. Uh, the size of the project, um, Burke Consultants, uh, was engaged to take a look at our MFT program, and they have been very engaged at the state level as well in actually developing the workbook. So, um, they provided a couple of recommendations. Um, first of all, allowing the MFT to apply to duplexes as well as providing clear requirements in the code for affordable unit designation. So staff generally, uh, agree with those, um, recommendations. Uh, with some, some, um, potential changes noted below and on eight, uh, page eighty-four. So, um, getting into, um, one of the other recommendations by Burke is to remove the twelve-year option for owner occupied housing in favor of a twenty-year approach. And, um, that, um, is so in longer term, so as we get more development and perhaps the eight-year market rate is more absorbed, there may be an opportunity where we may need more affordable housing. And so, um, I think that's one reason why they, they thought that we should consider a longer-term, um, affordability approach. Um, staff, uh, kind of went back and forth on that a little bit. Um, we believe retaining the twelve-year MFT is important and adding safeguards against affordable units being sold at market rate may be an option. So for your consideration and comment. Uh, under state law, the twelve-year MFT owner occupied units has no clear safeguards against owners and of income restricted units from selling the units at market rate. Um, so, you know, something to consider. And also, we thought adding a twenty-year MFT for partnering with nonprofits might be, um, a, a good consideration for the city of Lakewood. Um, the other recommendation was to increase our partnerships with nonprofits like Habitat for Humanity, Korean Women's Association and so forth. We agree with that and, uh, think that would be a great idea. Uh, no change to proposed completion date at this time. Uh, under compliance, uh, the, uh, changes that were proposed by Burke were to include partial waivers of downtown subarea planned action transportation fees, um, for these multifamily tax incentive, uh, projects. Also, to allow flexibility in development standards regardless of inclusionary zoning participation. And to identify the need for future in-lu payment options for receiving bonus units under inclusionary zoning. Although, an assessment of current feasibility suggests that, pardon me, bonus density can be challenging as an incentive. But there is a potential that future market conditions could make bonus density more feasible in certain areas. So the city should plan for future in-lu payments options to allow for requirements under the LMC. And then the other point that they suggested is to provide clearer fee reductions. Qualify low-income housing units that they can receive, reduce permit fees based on percentage of affordable units. So that was something they thought we might want to consider as it is likely that the proportion of low-income units provided in a new project will align with the other characteristics. This fee reduction would be simplified, potentially only including reductions by affordable units and/or projects that qualify for the MFTE. So staff notes regarding to that. So we, one note or one thing that we've discovered in, in our LMC, our code is requires an equal proportion of units built of the same type. So example, fifty percent of the units, one-bedroom, fifty percent, two-bedroom. Qualified units shall be divided equally between one and two-bedroom. However, we've heard in the market that there is a lack of one-bedroom and studio affordable units. And, and so requiring equal distribution may not meet market demand. And so there's a consideration on whether or not we should be more flexible in that area. So moving on to duration. So we, we feel like we should maintain, or Burke felt like we should maintain the eight-year MFTE to encourage redevelopment and housing growth in the downtown, as well as the Lakewood Station District area. And plan should be in place to remove the eight-year plan option and reduce qualifying household income levels for tenants once development in these areas is considered more feasible. So staff agrees with maintaining the eight-year MFTE and consider removal after market rate development is sufficient. So another item for consideration. And then, moving on to the application process on page eighty-six. Burke recommended to provide a guidebook for the MFTE program. We already have one, it needs to be updated based on, on what, what changes we do make going forward. And, you know, include clear outline of the program, expectations to the developers. And staff agrees with that. We also, Lakewood has considered switching, just, you know, the process currently is that a developer will apply. We accept the, the application and the proposal. It's then taken to city council for review and approval. That typically takes about three to four months of the process. There is an option where, you know, we could do it administratively. That is possible, some cities do do that administratively. And so there's different schools of thought on whether or not to do that. So that's another area, if you would, Dave, yes?
Mr. Buhr.
I'd like to comment on a few things when we get to this section. First of all, just to let you know what the process is. First of all, you have to submit a multifamily tax exemption application. Then you have to submit some pretty, some pretty detailed site plans and project descriptions. And then we'll go through a formal design review of your project to make sure you meet code requirements. Only then are you allowed to move forward with, quote, "a conditional certificate issued by the city of Lakewood, plus a contract and a council resolution." Now, that's a lot of work at that level. At that point, what happens is the county assessor goes out and reassesses the property because that's something they want to do prior to permits being approved. So that's the next step. Then they do the construction. Then administratively, we sign a final certificate, at which point they can then go to the county assessor and the next tax year obtain their exemption. So that's all the processes. Getting to the council sometimes is protracted because their agenda is full. And so we have to sit around and wait to get a chance to get in there. That's problem number one. Lately, we've had another problem where developers don't think that their design review is, is a part of the approval process, and it is. And if you change the design review, you have to go right back and request an amendment to the conditional certificate. Now, I don't personally like it when developers choose to make amendment to the design review because going back to the council for a second bite of the apple is not a very, never a very good thing. But I, I just want to give you the idea of how it works. But right now, the council has charge of approving the conditional certificates, not the city staff, we just make a recommendation. That's something that I think is worthy of some discussion. I'm not sure the council likes the idea, but, but I, I do wish to point that out to the, the planning commission that's this evening. This is one way to improve the efficiency of the program. I will also point out that if we're going to amend the multifamily tax exemption, we also want to take a look at the maps because we're going to call them the areas differently. We're not going to go with the TIUUC, we're just going to go with an RTA. We'll have to amend chapter three, which is the business, the taxing section of the code. And there's various sections within the zoning districts that we're going to have to modify, including eighteen-eight ninety. So all that needs to kind of come together. There's a lot of pieces to this. We don't have any real schedule yet because we need to work this out amongst everything else that you're working right now. I have not scheduled this for the city council for action until we have a, a better picture of what this looks like, so.
Mr. Estrada.
As you said, Mr. Buhr, it's, it's a lot of work, but it must be worthwhile not to have to pay any property tax for two-hundred units.
Well, you don't pay, no, you don't pay zero property taxes. You pay property taxes on a portion of the property, which is the land. And then you receive a reduction for the structures for a period of time, and the purpose of which is to encourage housing. That's originally what the design of this program was, of economic development. It has since changed, and now the program is more or less designed to provide for affordable housing.
Yes, Mr. Combs, oh, didn't know, person, Ms. Pearson.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I, I like the idea of going to a more administrative approach rather than having to go to council all the time. And, you know, if they have specific concerns that need to be addressed, you know, I, if we could get that into the code, you know, their, the most, their top, you know, top concerns, that might help, you know, ease the, the decision from them to, to let the city handle it rather than having to go to council every time. So that's, that would be my recommendation on that.
Mr. Arson.
I concur.
Yeah, Mr. Combs.
I have a few comments, so I'll wait until the end, but I concur as well with this.
All right, go ahead, Becky.
And as Mr. Buhr mentioned, it does, it's a council process. And council can say no if, after all of that, they can say they don't like the project and just, you know, not accept the tax exemption after four months or what have you. So with that.
Which, which kills a development. Yeah, that just squashes, any momentum you thought you had is gone. So if we're really serious about solving a housing issue here, we, a change makes a lot of sense in my mind.
Okay. And then on eighty-seven, page eighty-seven, develop an auditing program, which we definitely agree with. We definitely need to boost that and have it match the program that is decided upon, upon ultimately. And then on page eighty-eight, there is a recommendation by Burke to expand the RTAs to include expanded portions of potentially Springbrook and multifamily areas in the Tillicum neighborhood, as well as the Lakeview Kendrick area. Also, downtown, it's Lakewood Kendrick area. Lakewood Station and downtown are probably okay, but they don't exactly match the subareas. So that's another thing you may want to consider. And as we all know, there is a mandate to densify Tillicum more, so there may be an opportunity as well. And staff does agree to consider expansion, depending on where we think we need the housing the most. So, okay. And then, moving on, the rest of this really goes into the application review, decision, and appeal. I won't really go over all of that. And more tonight is just kind of looking at the program and getting a feel for, you know, comments, questions you might have. And then, you know, we, we also have final certification, it goes through that process. That's just something that we, staff takes care of. And we finalize that with, with Pierce County. And, you know, the projects can be, on page ninety, notes that projects may be canceled for non-compliance. Developer may decide they want to back out as well and, and just do a market-rate project and back out of their twelve years. So that's their option as well. And we obviously have city annual reporting. And then on page ninety-one talks a little bit about establishing areas eligible for the MT, MFTEs. It gets into that a little bit more. Both Burke, as I mentioned, and staff agree there is a potential to increase those areas to be more in line with where we need housing. And then on page ninety-two, there's a summary review of some of the other projects or programs that are in different jurisdictions, such as Bellingham, Spokane, Wenatchee. And many of them have unique characteristics. So we do have flexibility, so if we feel like there should be specific parking restrictions or some other unique custom requirement that we think would be applicable to Lakewood, we can definitely add that to our program. And then, so just to let you know also what the schedule is going forward. We do, are looking for feedback, obviously, questions, comments from today. And then going forward, we taking additional feedback through April twenty-eighth. And then there is a planning commission public hearing that's scheduled for May eighteenth. We can, you know, wiggle those dates around a little bit as far as the twenty-eighth, if you need more time. And then, action is currently scheduled to be taken on June seventh. And then there is a list of projects that we have in Lakewood. In addition to those that are listed, we have a couple of other projects. One that's just getting finalized, actually this week. It's one-twelve townhomes, it's fourteen new townhomes. And those will be finalized this year. And so they'll be able to take their tax exemption next year. And then Toto Townhomes, which is fifty townhomes. And then a couple of final comments for you. So the workbook that is on the state website is very helpful if you want to refer to that. And I did bring some handouts if, if you'd like to, but all of this is on the state site. The handouts I have are mostly, I think, related to what is an MFTE and what is AMI and tax shift and how all that works. So your consideration would be for length of program, eight, eight-year no affordability, twelve years, and the twenty-year program with affordability and a potential for partnership with a nonprofit. Also, to let you know, as I mentioned, municipalities, I'd like to stress, we do have some flexibility in, in our programs and what we offer and can make it fit our community. And then we want to look at how it meets our goals. So like, for example, the downtown calls for seventeen hundred units of residential. Currently, we have like, what, four hundred and ninety or maybe five hundred? And so we definitely need an economic development tool or incentive for that. And the Lakewood Station District looks to be a net growth of about seventeen hundred units as well. So the other key consideration is anti-displacement. And so Lakewood is fairly built out. So if we're looking at areas for redevelopment, we want to be cognizant of, you know, not displacing folks that are living there as well. Other things that, that jurisdictions look at as flexible items, parking, additional affordability, you don't, you know, for example, our affordability is eighty percent of AMI. Some jurisdictions require seventy percent. So, and then also some, you know, you can, you can require lead certification. You may require a public amenity in the project. So just kind of think about, you know, the areas and what you think is needed here in Lakewood. As you all know, Washington State is in dire need of, of more housing, both affordable and market-rate housing. And housing affordability is a major concern in the Puget Sound region. And how can MFT, how can MFTE help promote desired development? Is, is what we're looking for as a tool, pardon me. And then last consideration of staff time and resources, pardon me, going forward. And what else? So MFTE framework is a substantial incentive for developers, so, thank you. I have water. And the market still plays a major role in the development of, of housing going forward. MFTE costs that need to be balanced with what is being received as well. And the purpose and goals may change over time. So they may need to be revisited, you know, in the years to come as well to make sure that we're meeting the goals that were, were intended for the program. So with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions, comments, concerns.
Yep, Mr. Estrada.
Or, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Who does the analysis of what we lose in revenue per se, taxes, versus the twenty-five, twenty to twenty-five percent of low-income affordable housing that we supposedly get with MTF?
The city staff does an analysis for council that provides what, you know, property tax is currently for the project or the land, and then what it is for, let's say, the eight-year period. And then also what it's anticipated to be once that eight-year is, is finished. And typically, you know, the, the benefit long-term outweighs what we lose in revenue in the interim period, if that makes sense. So the staff does that analysis.
Mr. Combs?
And if I could expand on that just a little bit, I apologize. I've been drinking MFTE Kool-Aid for quite some time. And I think that a few things that came up. We have a housing need, and this is by far one of the biggest incentives that you can use, is one of the best tools out there to get a developer to come in. We haven't seen the momentum yet, but it'll come. And we, we got to continue to have this tool. If we don't put a good tool and a simple tool out there, we're not going to get the, we're, we're going to lose it also to our competition, which is surrounding cities who are already offering it and are very successful with it. Tacoma being a great example. Specifically to the lost revenue, you don't get revenue if it's not built. So if it's an empty lot or if it's something else, it's nothing. It's, it's only land that you're getting. So this is really not giving up any taxes. It, it, there is the tax shift, which you, I agree, you can go in and look at that. And I'm glad to talk about it offline. They're by far still way more favorable. And even during this time that you have still land that's increasing in value, you have improvements that they do pay on. So if there's parking and they collect parking, they have that. If there's retail, which I think the more we can incentivize mixed use in certain areas, absolutely give them, maybe there's more tools. I commend you for the great work on this because I've talked to Becky, I'm sorry, Mrs. Newton, offline about this program a little bit as well. And it's awesome that the city has us. We, and we need to keep it and keep, keep beating the drum. I, I will say the one area that I had some questions on was relating to where we're offering or how we're offering it. If we're opening it up to duplexes, a lot of administratively, that seems like a lot of work. And I guess I'm, I'm a little protective of staff's time. And so I like to look at economies of scale. At what point does it get to be so much work that it's not, you know, we're spending so much time on that? And, and then what are we doing? Is, is everyone who has a, a mother-in-law or ADU or, or second unit? Now is this becoming something that could? And with the new zone, with the new changes the state put out there, I have a lot of concerns with the size of it. So, and, and not to say that it wasn't a good job or thoroughly thought through, but those are the, that's the big one. In fact, I, I even have concern with the fourplex having it, especially with the new zoning that the state may be forcing upon the cities here. So in my mind, I would even have the, the minimum still be 15 like the other ones. And I would do that on the eight-year as well. It seems like, keep it simple would be my take. And I know that, that, you know, there's a lot of other ways you can slice it and dice it, but there's something to be said about simple. And so I, I do think a little bit in the size adjustment on that, that you added some extra things in there that had some other incentives. Yes, to all of those in my mind. I mean, all of them are very simple. The one that I didn't see on there was parking. And I know it's sensitive, but if we're doing these in the right areas. And so we talked about adjusting the RTA. I think that's smart. I like the recommendations in there and what that looks like, I guess is to be determined. So I, I know we don't even have anything to look at yet. It was just kind of ideas, but I totally support expanding and adjusting those to fit whatever our needs are today and what our target is. I am a fan of maybe even making it larger. I don't think there should be MFTE on very, on low density. Or if there is, it should be, there should be some criteria for it. Because what we're trying to do is create some economies of scale. And so the cost that, that Mr. Estrada was talking about, you know, the cities do carry the cost of 911 calls, fire, police and infrastructure and those calls. And, but those are costs that are, you know, basically we're all as citizens here saying, hey, we're willing to take this on for long-term investment and you are getting tax income in the meantime. Market rate housing though produces a lot more income and tax. I mean, the cost benefit analysis is extraordinary for market rate. And for 80% AMI, I worked on them and, and I've run the numbers. I've worked with, you know, the state, talked to the state, talked to other cities. I work with other cities related to this. And it is in our best interest to continue having it, but there is a cost related to it. So how do you do that? And it doesn't always work out if you, you know, state assistance or other assistance, you know, properties where people are dependent on the state for help, they do get more calls. And so there is a disproportionate amount of cost there. But still a need that we're trying to, you know, you can't solve that, that housing issue by not making more housing. So I think it's still something we should tackle. So those are the things that kind of jumped out. I, I haven't gone through all the notes and I know there's more to come, but most of the other recommendations looked really good to me.
Mr. Larson?
That's a perfect entree to the next step, which I think the, it, it seems to me, should say as readily apparent, but we've, we're inserting a system of, or a section of approvals into this process that doesn't need to be there and isn't, doesn't, to my eye, look to be efficient. Because if you, when you have to go take what the staff knows and can find out and can deal with, and you insert the function of the city council into the process. It seems to me that, that the staff does a pretty good job knowing what they're doing. I watched them. It's, it's a good staff here. And why do we need to put a system of mostly unknowledgeable people about housing? And, and a lot of issues, business issues of constructing the, the project on, at all levels, from groundbreaking to architecture to the contractor and the construction itself. So that would be my thought is, let's see if we can get the government more streamlined. The, the second thought is, I wonder whether we have in this whole process of permits and stuff, somebody looking at it to say, how can we do things shorter and simpler and easier? And, or is that a component part of the section heads, the direction as to how to run their departments? Or i- is there something like that that you're constantly doing?
Okay, you, you've asked a different question. Okay, you're, you're, you're getting into efficiencies and permitting and things like that.
Right.
All right. There was another state law that's coming down the pike that talks about permitting and the whole process. And so we're going to be talking about that with staff and the city council. But ultimately what it means is we're going to hire more people. And because we want an 85% cost recovery, that means the cost will be shifted down to the applicants. So if you want greater efficiency, fine. We're not, the city's not going to subsidize it via the general fund by council policy. So greater efficiencies equals more staff time, which means your application fees will go up. Now, something, it's a little different, but kind of relates to your subject is what, we, we are talking about doing an internal opportunity for special interest groups to come and meet with community development staff. Myself, meaning for example, have all the realtors come in, all the commercial realtors, for example, come in and meet with myself and Becky, the current planning manager, development services manager, the building official, and then have an opportunity to ask questions about how we do things. And I do think it will be kind of a gripe session. That's fine, but it's an opportunity to have direct feedback into how the department operates to see if we can find those efficiencies. But I want to be very clear, we're getting more and more regulation. We're not getting less. Okay? And so every time the legislature is in session, it means there are new rules and new policies and procedures. So this is getting more complex. It's not getting simpler.
Great. Does that go back to how we process these projects for building permits and the requiring council involvement?
That's a different issue. But if you're talking about, for example, the building codes, international construction codes, those are approved by the legislature. For example, we have new energy code requirements coming forward that are going to be costly. That's a state requirement. The city will be imposing a new ordinance implementing those regulations. And there's not a whole lot we can do about it. So all the building department is doing is implementing the requirements of the state legislature. This is not the city council. The city council is required to adopt the code, which it's doing. Now, as it pertains to, to this program, multifamily tax exemption, there are some opportunities for changing how we approve the permits, the process. That's something that we've talked about this evening. I don't know how the council feels about it. I kind of sort of feel like they're reluctant. So, you know, that's something that we can have further discussion with. But they, they want to be able to have a surety because someone's getting a tax break. And as an elected official, they want to know about it.
Yeah, I get that.
And that's the other side of the coin. It doesn't mean that we can't do something where we do it administratively, but then give semi-annual reports to the city council, what's been approved and, and what the amounts were and so forth. There's some options there that we can talk about.
Mr., thank you. Mr. Pearson?
Mr. Brewer, do you have any idea what some of the councils, like, you know, big ticket issues are with these or like, why are reasons, what are the reasons that they wouldn't get approved typically? Or what are their concerns, I guess?
Oh gosh. Put me on the spot. I will tell you that when we take a, a tax exemption application to the city council, it's, it's tough. They look at it in great detail. They look at the cost analysis. They review what the project looks like. They check on the parking standards. They give it a thorough review before they're wanting or willing to accept approval and, and agreeing to a resolution contract and conditional certificate. And, and, and that's their responsibility and role. I go back to the fact that you mess with people's property taxes and, and part of this is this tax shift. So that means if Mr. Estrada is doing a project, there's a reduction in his property taxes. But that also means everybody within the taxing district is getting a slight increase. It's probably only three or four pennies. But everybody else's tax is going up to support an affordable housing project. It's so small, you don't see it because it's wrapped in with, you know, all the other things the assessor does. But that's one part of this. And so that's one of the roles that I think the council wants to take a look at. But it, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be talking about it if we're trying to improve process. And maybe along the way, we come up with something better. You know, there's a lot of cities that do things differently. So, and we have some discretion here. We need to do some more research on it.
Any, any other comments for Ms. Newton?
Question.
Your microphone, Mr. Estrada.
Sorry, sir. On page 92, you speak of programs in other Washington cities. I noticed that only two of them have city council approval is what we're just talking about now. So I, I assume then the rest of them have, it only goes to staff approval?
I think most of them list, sorry, I think most of them listed here have administrative, administrative approval. So like, for example, Mr. Brewer could be the administrator or I could be the administrator. So staff would, to standards, obviously that council approves, approve a project. And, and then the staff would then approve the project, not council.
Yep, Mr. Combs?
What I was going to say, but to Mr. Brewer's point, who, who will take that, not the hit per se, but that council do the heavy lifting versus staff when it comes to taxes. My taxes, your taxes. That's the way I, I perceive it. That's the way I perceive it.
Mr. Combs?
I, I think the program itself is something that either we're on board with or we're not. Because if we're on board with it, then the process should be streamlined, as streamlined as possible. Anytime you have uncertainty, you slow down development or you don't do it. And so having administrative review not only expedites it and ensures that it gets done in a reasonable amount of time, but it gives them that sense of security, knowing that there will not be subjectiveness to it, but there will be some consistency with how it's being reviewed. It'll still have to meet certain standards. It'll still get reviewed. There, there still could be comments, but it'll be based a little more consistent. And so I'm a big fan of administrative, especially working with developers all the time. You know, if you're delayed four months waiting for someone to approve it, you might just move on to the next project. I mean, that's a, it's a big time delay. And if you need to park your money, that could, that could hurt it. I would also add to the, you know, when you're going through this whole review process, I think that staff can create a lot more efficiencies in that process as they're going through these than it would be for the, the city council. I think it'd be harder for the city council to get efficient if we're trying to encourage these. But I think the staff could come up with a process and already has one, but can continue to refine it over time.
Mr. Brewer?
A couple of points here. Before it gets to the city council, I'm a stickler of making sure everything, the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted and everything is in place. Because if the design review is, is a problem, then, then, then we have to start all over. Recently ran into an issue with one project where he did not properly propose handicap or accessible parking in an underground garage facility. That, that caused some significant issues. We were able to resolve it, but you know, making sure that project is properly designed and meets code prior to approval, particularly if you're going to the city council, is significant. The other thing that we talked about today, and this is a new topic, is we've been considering tax increment financing for a certain section of the city of Lakewood. Multifamily tax exemption prob, projects really undermine the efforts of a tax increment program. So we're studying that and trying to find out which is the best. Tax increment finance, financing and provide more money for infrastructure to fund new development or go with the multifamily tax exemption program. So we're having to wrestle with that.
I, I think there's an opportunity still for both. I think tax increment financing is an awesome tool and it wasn't here recent, until just recently. It's something that I don't know if everyone else here is familiar with, but it basically provides an opportunity to pull funds and, or tax, tax our, the, the, ourselves to do an infrastructure that will hopefully incentivize a certain amount of development. And so, and it has to be public benefit. There has to be a public benefit to it. So it could be parks or it could be infrastructure and so on. But I, I appreciate the concern. I, I'm, I'm not sure that it has to be one or the other. So I, I won't, I won't vote on it right now, but I, I, I think if we get creative, there's ways to make them both work.
Any other, Mr. Wegman?
Yeah, I've enjoyed the conversation so far. And, and I think the goal here is, is that, that we want more housing, right? I think, I think that's the overarching goal. We want more housing. And we want to make sure that it's affordable for, for some of the possibly disadvantaged in our community, that they have a place to live. So that's our, that's our goal. So then I heard lots of other things here, you know? I think efficiency and, and making the process, I, I think when you work on the government side, it seems like government doesn't realize that time is money. That's just my observation. And so the question is, is how do we become more efficient? So I heard several comments on that. But I, I get fearful when you start making things pretty efficient. Although sometimes your end result isn't where you want it. You know, I can give you an example. I start doing something with my yard and I hire some people or I have my children get out there and start working. And the end result isn't even close to what I want. So, so how do you put the checks and balances in? So then we make more rules, which makes us less efficient. So how do you, how do you build that trust? Or how do you put certain checks into place before it gets totally out of control? Uh, is, is the concern as I see with this? Mr. Combs made a comment that he's concerned about duplexes. I would be a little bit more, is there a number? I mean, you think, how, how, how big a unit?
I just think, I, I, I think 15 was what we had on the other ones. And I, I just think 15 is a, I just think you need to have some economy of scale for the staff to spend enough time on this program. You want it to be worth it. And I'm afraid that you all, you could open it up. I've never seen it done on, on such a small size of, on, on any city yet. And so I guess I'd just be curious.
So, so your experience is that it needs to be a multifamily unit of about 15?
Yeah, something of significance. I don't know what the magic number is, but because we had 15 in there, I thought, yeah, 15 is enough. It could be a significant investment and it'll provide, I mean, it, it doesn't give us a ton, but it give us three, three affordable apartments if it's a, you know, I mean, it doesn't give us a ton, but it'd give us three, three affordable apartments if it's a, you know, twelve year deal. So I think that's good. And housing affordability is a tough one because you may not always solve it with market rate. Is oftentimes that's the thinking, but all the other housing is still here. And without more housing, you don't, you don't answer, you don't solve it. You don't create affordability by not producing housing. I mean, there's no market in the world has proven that yet. So we, we have to somehow provide more. And we don't have a ti, I mean, we still have a need for market rate. So if nothing else, it'll get some funds going there and it may not bring it down to what we all expect and would like to see. I think all of us would love to see a ton more cheaper and it would benefit all of us. But it'll at least keep it from rising too fast.
So as we provide more housing without making it so cheap that it falls apart and it looks ugly in a short period of time. So that's the game that we're trying to play here.
I, I think that the, the building codes already address the, the constructability. And the designer view will help because that'll make sure that also looks appealing to it. Say, you know, it kind of, they do have a minimum standard still for a developer to come in and, you know, overbuild. It's unlikely in any market unless you're able to get, you know, be able to get a bigger number out of it, honestly. So I, I, I don't see any of those projects even trying to qualify for this.
Mr. Buer?
A couple of things. An affordable house, a single family modest house in the city of Lakewood is five hundred thousand dollars now. And the most recent information that we have on affordable construction for a town home is around two hundred forty-six, two hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. So that gives you kind of what the market is in Lakewood in April of twenty twenty-three. What's going to change is when, eleven, ten, because all of a sudden, single family residential zones are gone. And you're allowed to have two houses on any lot in the city of Lakewood, zone, single family. And say, for example, Mr. Combs says, you know what? We have a multifamily tax exemption prob, uh, program in Lakewood and I can now build a duplex. Or I'm going to go ahead and buy one of these lots, build two houses plus a two eighty U's. I'm done. And then he's going to apply for a multifamily tax exemption. And where are those cars going to park? And where's the garbage containers going to be? All those things can potentially change the quality of life for the surrounding neighborhood. Do you want to promote that level of development and intensity using multifamily tax exemption? I do not know the answer to that question, but that's something the community is going to have to wrestle with.
The, the reason density is helpful in my mind, and so not to beat that drum too much, because I'm not, it's not the hill I want to die on. But I, I would say when you're investing and allowing it, when you have that economy of scale, now you have all this infrastructure that can easily get there and it's already there in one spot. So if you have nine-one-one call, if you have a utility tie-in, all of it's going to one spot and it's generally located in an easy to get to area. Whereas if you do this broadly all over the place, that cost is a lot higher. I, I, it'd be very cost prohibitive in my mind and I would not want to see, I, I know the state is eager to see fourplexes all over every city, but I think that, you know, doing it in a, doing it in a responsible manner, there's ways that we can approach it that would make it a little more appealing or functional.
And keep in mind, the city of Lakewood does not own the sewer system or the water system. And so when we see higher intensive development in these neighborhoods, we're not sure what that's going to look like. We're getting a little off topic. I apologize.
So yeah, no problem. So any other feedback, Ms. Newton, at this time? I appreciate all your hard work and your presentation. If you do have further comments or suggestions or ideas, like Becky said, you can send to her by the twenty-eighth, prior to the twenty-eighth, is that correct?
Yes. And if we need some more time or more discussion, we can, we can revisit that.
Right. Great. Mr. Combs?
Is a, is a language going to be sent off? When, you know, is the final draft going to be sent off so we can comment on it? Or is there any?
I, yeah, I intend to do a draft. I'm, I'm sure that we would typically have a draft for review prior to any hearing. Right. Yep.
Yeah. Becky, the, the one thing we need to be careful of is, excuse me, eighteen A ninety and that's some, that's one section that needs to be rewritten anyway. So I'm not sure exactly how we're going to approach that right now, just an FYI.
Great. Well, thanks again. We appreciate all your hard work.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right. Okay, great comments and everything. Now we get to move back up or whatever way, unfinished business, right? Whatever way we're in, I don't know, up or down, right?
Yes, that's for sure. Thank you. So all of this is related to housing. So in some instances, we're in the same parts of our brain. But what we're now going to do is go back to the language for proposed amendment twenty twenty-three oh five with even more updated language than what was provided to stakeholders earlier this week and what was in the April nineteenth planning commission packet. So give me one second. Okay. And again, this has been really at lightning speed. So for you, I fully appreciate this is frustrating and confusing, which again is why we're suggesting no action tonight, no action on May third, maybe action on May seventeenth if you feel ready, longer if you need it. But the way it sits right now, we have certain areas in the city of Lakewood that allow permanent supportive housing and transitional housing. The city of Lakewood's code is currently silent on allowing emergency housing and shelters and is also silent on allowing space for foster care facilities. State law has changed in the last couple of years to where all of that is required. So this is fundamentally the city of Lakewood responding specifically to state legislative changes and state law mandates. As a result, there's not a lot of wiggle room in terms of doing something, but we're now down into the details and you've heard a lot of comments so far from the providers. And we internally have heard feedback from our city attorney, for instance, the city manager, other city staff that deal with pieces of, of these issues. So that's one or several reasons why you keep getting new versions. And then, as I mentioned before, this was also reviewed by the state department of commerce staff and they have provided us guidance with best practice and also pointing us to particular areas of state law that we may have missed the first time around. So as of tonight, I'll walk through this, and this is a lot of words with not a lot of explanation, but there are basically four parts to this amendment. One would create the, the area in the city where emergency housing and shelters would be required to be, oh, sorry, would be allowed per state law. The second part would be saying where foster care facilities would be allowed. And again, this is state law. And then also adjusting where permanent supportive and rapid rehousing and transitional housing is allowed. Again, responding to state law. And then our internal recommendation is to remove what are called concomitant agreements from the city code. They are obsolete. The city does not use them. And so, yeah, just, just remove them. So, you've seen these numbers before, maybe in a different look, but just as a reminder, where we're also starting from is that under state law now, the city has to plan not only for a total number of housing units and a total number of people by twenty forty-four, but it is now having to say so many of those units at different area median income levels. And it's also so many emergency housing units have to be identified. So state law, on the one hand, is saying you have to plan for these things. And now we're also getting, and you have to plan for this many of these things. So here on this screen, you'll see in red text up above that there's a total of six hundred and thirty-seven emergency housing units required for Lakewood by twenty forty-four. Right now Lakewood has eight. So there is a significant amount of change on this topic that needs to happen. And again, this is state law. But then what you also see in this, in the table is a broken out list by area median income of the number of units by twenty forty-four as well. And the ones on the left two columns refer to permanent supportive housing, which is part of this amendment as well. And we put those two together and what is that? Almost twenty-seven hundred units or so out of the total has to be for that area median income bracket, where it's zero to thirty percent of area median income. And I won't go into any more detail because it just gets confused. Okay. You may or may not have seen this graphic yet, but this is also just clarifying that over the last six years, twenty seventeen through twenty-two, this is the number of clients that were actually referred out from Lakewood's boundaries to external emergency shelters. So we've got the state saying by twenty forty-four, you need six hundred and thirty-seven units. If you look at twenty twenty-two's numbers, there were already five hundred and ninety-six people needing those services. They were provided outside of the city as a result of the, the status quo. And then the last sentence here on this slide, so far this year through April fifteenth, ninety-three clients have been referred out. So the blue text here, I'll just point your attention. What we're saying again is we're going to allow per state law, emergency housing and shelters wherever hotels are allowed. And then there's this clause in the statute that also says, except where there's an ordinance authorizing these things within a, in a majority of zones within one mile of transit. And maybe for some cities that makes a big difference. You'll see in a moment on maps that that really just means, in Lakewood's geography, it's the same area of the city. It really doesn't make a difference. But it's there for maybe another city that looks a different way on the ground. It also, under state law, permanent supportive housing shall be allowed where multifamily housing is allowed. Permanent supportive and transitional housing have to be allowed where residential units or hotels are allowed. And then again, you have to identify capacity for foster care facilities. So this map, I think we went over this briefly last time, but this is again, clarifying for you where hotels are currently allowed. So for those state requirements, this is where you would see emergency housing, emergency shelter, permanent supportive and transitional housing, separate and apart from the transit one mile, but this is where things are allowed now. And this is where those types of units will now be allowed going forward.
Yes, Mr. Combs?
Just a quick question. When it says allowed in multifamily on the last tab, thanks. As, as we get this state mandate, this basically says everywhere. Cause everywhere is going to be multifamily if that passes, correct?
It's, well, you get really into hair splitting and there's a definition.
I don't, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. Cause yeah, I was, I mean, if that's the case, that's highly problematic in my mind. And I don't know if there's anything we can do about it, but.
It's a matter of going into the guts of the definition of multifamily housing and seeing how many units that means. Right now, city of Lakewood has its own definition of five units or more. That is considered multifamily. That may or may not be the same definition in this new state law.
Maybe we move it up to seven, eight or whatever.
If there's a discretion to do that, yeah.
I don't know. Yeah. Yeah, I guess we won't, don't need to solve that today. It, that did concern me a little.
Yeah. So again, these are the commercial zones where hotels are currently allowed. This map, and I apologize for the tiny print, but what you see on the left-hand side is the list of all the current hotels in the city. And they are located on the map on the right in the blue areas. And then the red text that you can't see very well is actually the distance between each one of them. And so you have, they vary, but if you look far away enough, if you're looking down at from space, you can say that the thousand feet that has been proposed in city code, this is where it came from. Was taking a look at where they're actually allowed. And the idea was let's come up with a general number that makes some sense. Other jurisdictions, Mr. Buer did a, a lot of review of other areas. And some cities have distances that are greater than a thousand feet. Some don't have a distance. There's not a prohibition on, on saying there has to be some distance between these things. It's just a matter of figuring out if that makes sense in terms of how many units you also have to plan for within your city. So if you go back to that seven hundred, or sorry, six hundred and thirty-seven units, you have to do citywide of emergency units. If you make the distance between the, the structures so big, you can't hit that number, have you just shot yourself in the foot?
Yes, Mr. Buer?
A, a couple of things. And one of the questions you haven't asked is why is this specific to zoning and hotels and motels? I mean, my response to that would be there's an assumption there on the part of the state that those are more apt to be converted into emergency shelter, emergency housing, which places them all along the I-five corridor for both Tacoma and Lakewood, DuPont and the majority of other communities. So the, the thousand foot was, 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 was chosen in this particular case to give an idea, could we meet the six hundred and forty-four or six thirty-seven? The other thing that, that I would like to point out, we did a deep dive into what other cities do in this area. And the deep dive was specific to Federal Way and also to C-TAC, both of which have a high number of hotels and motels. The rules and regulations are all over the place. And we can provide that information in a future meeting. But I was amazed at the way in which people or which cities do things because it's not all the same. And much of the testimony that we've heard so far doesn't match what other communities are doing. So either we're wrong and they're wrong, or there's something in between. Now, that's the deep dive on those two cities. We've also did a cursory review of other cities. And again, the regulations and the requirements all seem to be somewhat similar, but also very different. Federal Way, as far as I could see, had the longest separation, which was over a mile. So just to give you an idea, cities are trying to find a solution to what's a moving target. And, and this is not easy stuff. I just want to make sure you understand that.
Mr. Pearson?
Um, do we have any idea where the, you know, where these folks are getting services at? Is there like a, you know, is there a few locations that they're typically going for counseling? Are these, you know, with different things that they need?
Right now, because there's such a small number of units in the city of Lakewood, really you've got supportive services provided through Greater Lakes Mental Health, LASSA, comprehensive life resources. But in terms of actually a place to stay and what would be offered at a place to stay, that's going to be city of Tacoma for the most part. And as you may well know, many of the services are also already in the city of Tacoma anyway. Part of this whole scheme though, is to show how on the part of the provider, they either bring services on site when they open, so they're right there for the, the residents, or provide transportation to where the services are available.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, you know, if we have places that these folks are needing services that we're not, you know, putting too big of a radius. And now, you know, it's like, we should be providing service, housing where the services are and not spreading it all across.
Yep. Um, one other point I'd like to make with what Mr. Buer just said is that a number of cities have regulated this for however many years. What we are trying to bring to you is twenty twenty-three best practice per the department of commerce. City of C-TAC adopted theirs earlier this year. So that's also a model that we're, we're using because it's so recent. And it was also kind of pointed to by commerce as a good example.
I would also point out on the operational issues that came up earlier, you know, that's something that is, is, we, we are studying and to be frank, we are not that have the expertise or skill to review their operations plan. And so if this is approved by the planning commission and city council, that would be a contract for service with a consultant so that they can review these materials and give us good information because it is not something that is within our, our wheelhouse.
Though the objection on the oh-five from the applicant to remove that thousand feet is the reason that they want it removed? Because they can anticipate having another facility?
It could be. It's, what I can tell you is that they are not, they cannot base that comment on state law saying you can't do it because yes, you can, and many jurisdictions have. And the other thing about the operating and development conditions, other jurisdictions have those. Commerce said that's perfectly fine. It's a matter of fine tuning them. But those two arguments, it's not, it's against state law to do this, so you can't. It's, in their perspective, it would be preferable not to.
Yes, Mr. Pearson?
Um, and then one more question. So generally, the, the changes are, are all just to kind of, you know, meet the bare minimum state, state code or state law. And then the, the change also is, do you, does it have to be permitted outright or could, could it be conditional use for these? I thought that it was conditionally.
In the past, the city did allow or did say conditional uses. In the past, the city did allow or did say conditional uses on certain areas of the city for permanent supportive and transitional housing. And then it was silent on the other types. What you now have in state law is you cannot do anything more restrictive than you do for other residential development types.
So every residential type would have to be conditionally used if you wanted to have.
Correct. Correct.
Yes, Mr. Bueller.
I will tell you that many cities do have a requirement for conditional use permits. We're not doing that. We're following best practices of Department of Commerce. There was another point and I can't remember it right now. My apologies.
Yes, Mr. Coles.
Sorry to drag this on. I, I will say that we are wholly inadequate in our city in helping with this. And I, and this is not the staff or the city's fault. It's just how, how things have laid out over the years. I've worked with the homeless, those in need, specifically trying to get them into help and services. And last I, last I couldn't get even calls back most of the time. I mean, I can't tell you how many messages I've left. We're just under service. So everyone really is directed to Tacoma's got the best support, which is, you know, not favorable for them. And it's basically a NIMBY, you know, not my backyard, to kind of send the problem somewhere else. We're highly transient because we're so close to I-5 and between everywhere. So we do have an increased amount of issues related to that that I can just kind of speak to more personally. And then I think that I have a general philosophy about this, which is we're only as good as a city or as a society is our ability to take care of our weakest among us. So I think that if we, I, when I look at this, I think we have a responsibility here. So how do we address this? But how do we do it as absolutely responsibly as we can? And so I preface my comment with that because my comment is I do support some distance between. And I know that's an unpopular position, but anytime you create, and this is an urban planning thing, I'm preaching to the choir on this. But anytime you take a certain amount of people with a greater amount of need and put them into one location, and the more dense that is, the more that happens in a smaller area, it creates a pocket of poverty or a pocket of problem. And I mean, you don't need to go far. You just drive up the street and you can see it in Tacoma or Seattle. The more dense you are and the more you put in certain areas, that's the way it is. There's a lot of studies to support it. But rather than getting into the weeds, that's why I actually am in favor of this. And if there's some reasonable distance, and I'm, thousand feet seems like plenty of room to get several of these facilities going if they wanted to here. And they're not exclusive to this. This is just our assumption that they're going to go in these locations too. So I, I think that I would support that. I saw a lot of questions on what the biggest other issues are besides, you know, what is it that we want or expect that they are in complete disagreement on? I haven't read through all that form, and so I need to go through it again. But if you, if staff has more insight onto what it is that we're at odds on, I'd be very curious.
Yep, Mr. Bueller.
Okay, now I remember what I was going to say. No, this proposed code does not require a use permit. It's all administrative. So you apply for the application, you meet all the criteria, and it's approved. Done. But say along the way, you know, you missed a couple of points. And the city says, we can't approve this because this item's missing. So until it's done, you, you're, you're not moving forward. Say we deny the application. If an administrative permit is denied, it goes to the hearing examiner anyway. So there is an appeal process that goes both ways. If the city is overbearing in its administrative review of these things, that's the one route. The other route is if you don't do it, then the city has the right to deny the request. And then once again, you're back to an appeal. So there is that opportunity there. And so this has been structured in a way that I think serves both needs, both the cities and the developers or the provider.
Thank you. Continue on.
Thank you. So just a clarification once more. And I think I've said this several times now, but to put it in front of you in text, we have created a special needs housing definition and along with a number of other ones in the proposed code that is basically everything we've been talking about except foster care. It's going to be handled as its own thing and zoned its own way. But that overarching umbrella term, you'll start to hear me say more and more as we go forward. Lots of words here. I'm going to try to summarize again. Definitions are added and updated. There are new permitting, operation, and development regulations included in several sections of 18A and also B and C, which are the two codes for the two subareas. There is a new overlay district, and that's new within the last 18 hours. So the idea here, and, and it was just touched on, going with the minimum of what state law requires. And you'll see this on a map in just a moment. But just making sure that what we're suggesting here is within the one mile of transit. And, and you'll see what that looks like for the city. The, again, the concomitant agreement is going away. The SEPTED information is being added as something for citywide in 18A. And it's already in our subarea plans. And just to be clear, this is not just on this type of development. This is for everything. So it, it's not a surprise and it's not unique to Lakewood. And then because state law now says you cannot tell supportive housing providers, in this case for Lakewood group homes, how many people can, they can have in there? We used to have in our code, or we currently have in the code, certain levels of intensity by a number of people in a dwelling or in a group home. That's going away just again in response to state law. Yeah. So, yeah. So again, we've been trying to make, it's, it's wordplay almost, but permitted uses with conditions is where we're headed with this code versus conditional use permit. And what that means again is it's an administrative review, appealable to the hearing examiner rather than the original application going to the hearing examiner. And the conditions are where you're starting to hear the comments that you heard tonight about the distance and what's, you know, the SEPTED stuff and the operating conditions on top of what they would do between the provider and the funder, for instance, of a, of a facility. Within the required submitted, you'll see it here. And you're going to get this as well as the updated language. But it's the permitting application requirements for administrative review. And then within a month of that, having a public meeting, which is not a city public hearing, is something that the provider puts out and says anybody and everybody within 300 feet, as well as any other groups that should be there, we're coming into your community and this is what we're proposing. And it's supposed to be a dialogue back and forth that the city is kept abreast of. There's also a requirement that the fire marshal or building official and building official, if it's coming into an existing facility, whether it's a hotel or something else, to go in there and say, this is what's required to make this a safe change of use, new occupancy. It's not necessarily bring absolutely everything up to code, but it's how to make this occupiable as this emergency shelter. And then the operation plan that was mentioned. And then also participating in the homeless management information system, which is, long story short, kind of the center hub of who's got beds where within the whole county. So people can refer if need be into or out of, in this case, it'll be Lakewood. There is a emphasis that this is not just complying with the requirements under Title 18A. There's also building and construction code requirements. And in particular, the building official has to issue a certificate of occupancy before these can open and operate. Talked about SEPTED. Bulk and scale of residential uses is where they need to go if you're in a residential zone. Unique to Lakewood, and I'm actually surprised nobody's talked about this in the public comment. But as you know, JBLM is next door. And there are specific, unique lighting limitations because of that for training purposes and night flying time. So that also would apply to these projects. Parking under 18A80, which is the citywide or the subarea 18B or 18C regulations. And then the directory is taking a look at also potentially case by case things. And then transit pedestrian and bicycle access from the subject site to services. So what you were mentioning before, Mr. Pearson. And it's also bringing those services onsite. So if you have some service and I, I'm not even going to be able to think of one, but that their hub is in Tacoma, they need to be at that site, however often makes sense, in the shelter itself for that person to have access to it. So you may continue to have the headquarters of something in Lake, or excuse me, in Tacoma, but the service is available in Lakewood because they're at the actual shelters. Operations, subject to inspection, onsite supervision's required. Again, the operation plan is required. And then also a demonstration that the agency has experience running these types of shelters or structures. And also they have a stable funding source for operations over time. Then on top of that general set of rules or requirements, there's specific ones for emergency housing and shelters. And this is where you see the thousand feet. It's also saying that in a residential zone, no more than 80 residences, residents, excuse me. And then in the other zones, no more than 100. This, we may need to take a little more look at because if you were to look at, for instance, one of the hotels in Lakewood that could get converted, it's got 212 rooms. And so does this make sense if that were to convert when you could have occupancy of up to 212 rooms and however many beds? That results in, limited by this code, when the whole point is you're trying to get people off the street and into units. Facility operations, no surprises here. The third bullet here is where you had some comments tonight about not wanting this language for no person under court supervision or under sex offender registration can receive services unless consistent with, with laws. So we have to do a little bit more research there, I would suggest.
Mr. Pearson, any question?
Um, there was some. Um, there was some concern about not providing support for folks that are under 18. Is there, um, is that by law, do we have to? Do we not have to? Or is there other places that those folks go because they're minors out?
Well, this code would actually incorporate the youth facilities as well. So their, their point is well taken. This probably needs some editing.
Okay.
Where if, if they are emancipated youth or if there's some sort of emergency situation where they need to be separated from their parents, where can they go? Yeah. So you can anticipate some edits there. The services themselves, here we go. The, the services have to be onsite, including mental and behavioral health counseling, substance abuse assistance as well. Dedicating spaces to meet with service providers, excuse me, if there's more than five residents. And then coordinating through HIMSS with the homelessness service providers in the area. For supportive and transitional housing, then there's a slightly different set of specific regulations. And they're just right here. Again, no more than 80. Does that make sense? We'll have to double check it. And then if it's a multi, sorry, if it is more than five units, it has to comply with multifamily housing design standards in a residential area or where multifamily would be allowed. And then you have to have, again, the dedicated spaces and the services available onsite. Abandonment for all of these, no surprise here, I don't think for anyone. But if it's, if it is abandoned for one year, you start over. You don't get to just come right back in. And then for foster care, they have their own state statute, their own chapter that talks about how they must function and the type of business license they're required to get. So we're just simply referring to that chapter in the proposed code. So now we get to the brand new stuff. You've already seen this. You've already seen this about the number of units. What we're suggesting with this overlay that you're about to see graphically is not to include it in air corridor one or two or the north clear zone because that is where no new residential development can happen due to safety concerns, et cetera. And the one caveat that you have in all of these state laws is now you do, as a city, have the authority to say, due to public health and safety, we're going to put these restrictions on it. And so that is where Lakewood is saying this is well demonstrated as a place where we're not letting regular residences, rather, let alone special needs in those three parts or three zones of the city. This is a table that attempts to summarize what would be allowed where under the, the latest version. So allowing foster care everywhere, transitional and supportive housing, changing the conditional use to the permitted. And then with emergency shelter and housing in the overlay, except for those three zones. And you'll see why that's mentioned specifically in a moment. And again, just a reminder, this is not permitted where you throw your permit on the counter and walk away. It's, there are conditions that have to be met and complied with. So here is your map. In purple is the area, solid purple, not the stripes, is where it is one mile from a transit under the state definition, except for on the east side of the city where you see that white, that is the air corridor and north clear zone areas. So by going this route, you are complying with the mandate of state law. What you see is where that affects the city. It is Tillicum and some of Woodbrook. It is the downtown. It is Springbrook, Lakeview, up into a little bit of Montevista, which as you all know are some of the more poor, historically disproportionately impacted on a number of different fronts. That is where this would be coming in. The city doesn't have to do only one mile. The city could look at some other option here. But this is saying if we are to follow state law as is, this is what it looks like. The other things on this map in different colors are different overlays. So for instance, the senior housing overlay, that's an incentive. The green hatch marks is that. And then the purple is the sexual oriented business overlay. And then the red is flood hazard areas. So any questions on what this map looks like or where it is? That is, as of tonight, I do apologize to all of you. It is confusing, I know. But what we're suggesting is that tomorrow I will get you everything that I just walked through in the slide deck, as well as the latest and greatest. And then come May 3rd, it's discussion night. It's not any action. It's whatever you want to ask or talk about, not only about O5, but any of them. And then if you feel ready again on May 17th to maybe take action, that's when we would do it.
Yes, Mr. Pearson.
Is there, so one of the, I don't know, last couple of slides before we got into the new stuff, talked about the, they had to comply with the development regulations. And so do they have to provide frontage improvements, you know, as, as part of this? Or how, how does that like work, I guess? Is there, is there different landscaping requirements or it's just whatever?
No, go ahead.
If it's a new building or a new structure, yes. If they're converting an existing hotel or motel, probably not.
Okay. And is that, and then that's, what, what kind of a permit is it, I guess? Is it a use permit?
It's a land use permit, yes.
That doesn't trigger frontage improvements?
It's, if it's new construction, yes. Or a change of use or under our site development code, if you're creating a certain percentage increase in traffic, yes.
Okay.
So this isn't a change of use?
So it will be, it's a change of use under the building code. So there is a process, the fire, the fire marshal and building official has to make an inspection. But under, under the current site development regulations, if, if you are an existing hotel that doesn't have curb cutter and sidewalk and you're converting into a shelter of some, of some kind, you probably are not going to be, hit the requirement for curbs cutters and sidewalks. But most, most areas in Lakewood, the hotels do have basic imperfections.
Yeah, Mr. Coles.
I, I mean, just as you said that, I started thinking about if someone were to buy it and convert a hotel to apartments, what would the requirement be for that? Because to me, it would seem like there likely would trigger a use change. And so if that's the case for apartments, it certainly would be for this.
We would have, I'm.
Policy at the state level that probably doesn't make sense.
But you know what I'm saying? It's like there, there should be, this is like consistency all across the board and then just making exceptions everywhere for this type of use. And so I, I always have consternation with that. I support the idea. I don't like the way the state's making us execute.
Well, if you go and take a look at Aspen Court and do an inspection, you'll find out that there's more than adequate parking because many of the tenants don't have vehicles. And the tenants that do have vehicles have assigned parking spaces. And the tenants that do have vehicles have assigned parking spaces. So I don't see that parking in, in particular is going to be a particular problem with these types of conversions if they already have a sufficient parking field. Now, the big question that, we haven't talked about this, but at some point, the city's going to amend its rental housing safety program. And so these types of facilities will go through an inspection process to meet building code requirements.
So just to clarify on the O five, with their objections that they had, they buy the property and then they come in and want all of the changes or some, you know, substantial changes to meet their needs. You know, they seem to do it backwards. I guess a lot of people do it that way, but you would think that before they bought the property or changed the property to the use, they would look at the.
There's such a demand for housing that I don't think homeless type housing, shelter housing, that I think that's less of an issue because they've been given a lot of accommodation under the state code already.
So they meet the eighty units currently? This, this property is going to meet those eighty units?
And this is a whole other wrinkle to this, Mr. Chair, because the Candlewood Suites was purchased. I'm not sure if and when they're going to submit their application and be considered vested. They may predate the adoption and effective date of all of this. So if that's the case, it's going to be looking at state law and relying on that language versus municipal code as to what, what will happen there. So what we're trying to do is work, work through this because undoubtedly there's going to be other hotel conversions, there's going to be other constructions of emergency housing and other supportive housing happening within the city. But in terms of that particular project, it may vest prior to.
But nevertheless, they need a relationship with the city, particularly Lakewood Police Department. They have been meeting with them to talk about operational issues.
It's a, you know, owner that has had multiple units, so it's not like it's just starting a new nonprofit. They, they have been operating in other jurisdictions around, so.
I will also say that the building official and I already did an inspection on the site, and it's, it's in very good shape. They do need to make some minor improvements for fire code. We did give them some suggestions about accessibility units and keep those, and those are highly valued, so do not use those for office space, for example. But, you know, those are some, some things that they can take into consideration. But that's in a, that facility's in very good shape and frankly lends itself to the conversion, frankly.
And I don't know if it was clear, I didn't make the point specifically, but if you were to look at that map of where all those hotels are currently located and the total number of units within them, it's over eleven hundred. And again, through twenty forty-four, it's six hundred and thirty-seven units is the target. So if you were to have a hundred percent of emergency housing and permanent, sorry, emergency housing units happening within the hotel conversions, you're not going to have the thousand foot concern necessarily. You're not going to have it spreading into other parts of the city if it's all dealt with through conversion of hotels. Whether the market's going to do that, whether the providers do that is another question, but that is possible within Lakewood. The other thing that I'd like to say is that one of the comments you heard tonight was we already have as a provider requirements, we have to comply with, with our funders. So why are you making us come up with these other conditions and operations plan for you? We're going to take a look at whether what a provider and a funder have is pretty much the same as what the city's asking for. So they just need to hand over what that agreement is, and we can take a look at that or if we need to take a different approach.
Yes, Mr. Bueller.
The, the issue of having substantial funding to, to keep your facility in operation is a big one. Because if you're going to approve these and you're going to have them, having some sort of long-term sustainability financial plan is going to be important. The other thing that I will point out too, this is a question for both the commission and council, do you want to consolidate where these are like we're suggesting? Or do you want to spread them out? For example, in federal A, the maximum number is fifty. So they parse it out throughout the whole city based upon a mile and a half separation, I believe. Is that something that you want to do or we better off doing what we're proposing? I'm just giving you the question to let you know that you have some options here about how you wish to move forward. That's why these numbers are important.
I think it would depend on what's effectively working in other locations because I'm not familiar enough with each of their locations. I do have a lot and I, I think you get too many and it could, it could be more work, but having it more than fifty would make sense to me.
It's going to also depend, looking at those cities, whether it's federal A or any of the other ones that have had their rules on the books for a while, they may well be having to update them too right now because of what's happened with state statute.
Any other on this topic? No carry none about any?
I, I will also say that some may say that we've been slow in bringing this forward. I would point out to the Planning Commission that this is such a moving target, it's better off to see what other cities are doing and learn from that before we put something in code. So I think that approach is maybe, maybe we didn't do it quite right because this is a new topic to all of us. But this approach, you know, even though we may have a vested facility, may in the long term be, be in the city's best interest.
So I just turned on the radio today. I was going through Kent and one of those motels were converted over and they evicted all of their residents today because funding stopped.
Yep.
So they're funding however which way. So there's, you know, eighty, sixty, however many of residents had to be out of the facility today and nowhere to go. So now they're back out on the street. So those, that funding issue is definitely, and this just recently, within the last one or two years, this facility was just converted.
Well, the other piece to this is a lot of the funding is provided by the state of Washington and a healthy economy. What happens when the economy's not so strong and funds are more difficult to find? Because then you turn to the city of Lakewood and say, hey, we need assistance to fund this facility because we're not in a position to do that either. So there's some, this is a tricky subject.
Great. Well, thank you for all the updates. Any other follow-up on reports?
No, Mr. Chair. We just will have our next meeting on the seventh, or excuse me, on May third, May seventeenth. Then you'll have Memorial Day week. There isn't, it's a fifth week, so you'll get an extra week in between. And Mr. Bokey, Councilmember Bokey's not here tonight, so no, or no update from City Council.
Okay. Any other closing hearing? None? Meeting adjourned.